Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall Meeting for December 1st, 2020. I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro.
Present.
Danny.
Here.
Gansey.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Present.
Swansky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under building and zoning Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items tonight. The first item is the Route 59 West Bartlett Road Concept Plan Review by Crown Development. It's approximately 114 acre mixed-use development site, duplexes, ranch homes, typical single-family, and then a pod dedicated to commercial, including 11 acres of open space. So with that, I'm assuming that Ms. Brill will want to kind of walk us through this.
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Ranky. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. So yes, as Trustee Ranky mentioned, this is a large concept plan review. It's at the corner of West Bartlett and 59. And as you can see from the location map I've got on my screen, it has quite a few zoning designations. It actually straddles both the east side and west side of Route 59, travels north to crosses over the Metro Sioux Line, and is north of the tracks. This is a copy of the concept plan. It shows the development actually consists of duplexes and ranch homes on smaller lots with snow removal and lawn maintenance provided. So these lots would typically attract an empty nester or an active adult buyer. Also included as part of this development plan are areas for typical single-family homes, townhomes, wetlands, open space, and commercial. There's also a perimeter path that would be located along the north side of West Bartlett Road and would provide pedestrian access to the commercial area and along the east side of Naperville Road that would connect to the existing path to the north, which is in the Amber Grove subdivision. So this plan identifies four pods or neighborhoods, and let me show you what those are. So Pod 1, located here, would consist of approximately 90 duplexes, and these duplexes would be located on 9,400 square foot lots with reduced rear yards. Pod 2, shown here, would consist of 60 ranch homes on 6,300 square foot lots with reduced lot widths and 30-foot rear yards. So Pod 1 and Pod 2 are what is being shown for this active adult buyer. And then moving on to Pod 3, this would be your typical single-family development on 8,700 square foot lots with reduced rear yards. And then finally, Pod 4, north of the tracks, would consist of 104 townhome units. The commercial is located at the hard corner of 59 and West Bartlett, and then you've got this large 50-acre wetland area north of the tracks, and then you've got finally this open space existing woodland area east of Route 59. So all of this is part of that 114 acres. The concept plan identifies a full access curb cut located here along West Bartlett Road, and you can see this is kind of a boulevard entranceway, the main entrance into the development. It's actually across from an existing curb cut on Chevyat Drive on West Bartlett. And then they would also be asking for a two additional curb cuts, a potential full curb cut located on the west end of the commercial, and then a potential right-in, right-out shown at this location closer to the intersection. On Naperville Road, there is south of the tracks, one full access curb cut proposed, leading into the residential development, and then the second access point would also be a full access leading into the townhome development, north of the tracks. And as you know, both West Bartlett and Naperville Road are under the jurisdiction of Cook County, and then 59 is under the jurisdiction of IDOT. So staff has directed the petitioner to contact both of these agencies to discuss the proposed curb cut locations that are outlined on this development plan. Just to give you an update on the West Bartlett Road intersection improvements, the, as far as staff knows, they are slated for a June 2020 letting with possible construction taking place in the fall of 2021. And this improvement does include dual left turns and designated right turn lanes at each leg of the intersection. So also part of this development, they would be required at the time of a full formal application to submit a traffic impact statement, and the petitioner has indicated that actually accounts are currently taking place. This impact statement, along with Cook County and IDOT's input, would determine future access point locations and will help to guide the layout of the development plan. It's also staff's understanding that Crown would be developing the overall property, or residential property, and would sell the, but would sell the single-family development sites to a residential builder. The comprehensive plan designation for the property identifies residential uses for the west half and commercial uses on the east half. And this property is also located within the high-quality suburban image zone of the West Bartlett Road corridor plan. And what that means is that the development would have to incorporate upgraded lighting, landscaping, and birmingham at the time of their full application submit all. Stormwater and wetland requirements would be determined at the time of a formal application. And finally, staff has directed the petitioner to reach out to the Park District for their review of the proposed parks and their required dedications associated with this development. And I do believe the petitioners are on the Zoom call tonight.
Roberta?
Yes?
You open for questions? Are you done with your presentation?
I am done, yes.
I want to talk to you about the curb cuts on West Bartlett Road for the commercial. Can you go over those again? Because I know if you're eastbound on West Bartlett Road, West Bartlett Road from 59 backs up sometimes way past Victory Center for people making a left-hand turn to go northbound on Route 59. That's a, that's a real critical area. Talk a little more about that. I didn't understand everything you were saying about those, those two curb cuts.
Okay, so right now, this is just conceptual, and neither one of these locations have been approved by the Cook County. But what you're seeing today is a single left turn lane. When the improvements to Route 59 occurred next year, there'll be dual left turn lanes. So that stacking will hopefully be shortened at this location to make that left turn to go northbound. So traveling in this direction, it'll be a dual left. There'll be two left turn lanes coming in.
Okay, alright. How long will that, if they're going to start in the fall of 2021, what's the, what is the estimated completion on that? It's not going to be like Sterns at 59.
I can answer. If, if they stay on schedule, this is Dan Dinges.
Oh, Dan, I didn't recognize your voice, sorry.
If they are, stay on schedule and have a June letting, that would likely mean that they would start utility relocates in the fall, and then spring of '22 would probably be the, when they would start actual road improvements. I'm guessing it is going to be, well, hopefully it's not as bad as Sterns and 59 was. But hopefully, it's going to take probably a year to actually do the road improvements. So you're looking at all of '22 and probably running into '23 before everything is done. And that's if it stays on schedule for a June letting. My understanding is they still have right-of-way to acquire.
Yeah, depending on whether any other unforeseen elements that might happen.
Right.
Okay. The, the detention areas, that's all been looked at, the multi, up there at the top on north side, yeah, the north section, east, east of the, south of the railroad.
The wetland areas?
Yeah. Those all, the designated wetlands and the detention areas.
That would all be reviewed when they submit a formal application.
Alright. What about annexing the other property going north on 59 and to the west of 59, south of where, yeah, there and across the road? Have we talked about annexing any of those properties?
That's not part of their ownership, but, yeah, no, we have not.
Okay.
Are those village properties?
I don't, I don't believe they are.
They are in the village, yes.
They are? So there's no need to annex them. I think there's a house, there's a house on one of those sides.
This is a house right here, yes. There used to be a house on this one, and it's turned down.
I, I didn't think they were part of the village. Thanks for clarifying that.
Roberta, I have a couple of questions. When we get to the Naperville Road curb cuts, Naperville Road is still currently two lanes. Are we looking to put in a deceleration lane and a left turn lane so that people can get in and out of here safely without being rear-ended or run over?
I think that would depend on what the results are of their traffic impact statement. And that's why staff would be requiring that as part of this development.
Yeah, because the one that's north of the tracks is really close, and, you know, people go flying over those railroad tracks, and when people are trying to turn out of that Pod 4, it's not going to be a pretty sight.
I think that's something.
Do we have the petitioner online?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you for considering Bartlett in the first place. You know, it's very exciting whenever we see a proposal of this size. Obviously, what you've heard in the board meeting was there are numerous concerns about the traffic on Naperville Road. So I think a lot of what you're hearing is, you know, what are we going to do with the traffic on West Bartlett and the curb cuts? And, you know, I'm sure there's going to be questions about stoplights and things of that nature. And, and I understand it's just a concept, but that's something that obviously, as a concept, we're very concerned about. In terms of Pod 3, the residential, the single-family, do you have any notions of who you might sell that, that Pod 2?
So let me introduce myself first. This is Dan Olson with Crown Community Development. I head up the Engineering and Construction Department for Crown. With me tonight is Chris Nats. He heads up our Sales and Marketing Department and our planner, Rich Olson with Gary Webber and Associates, as well as our engineer, Eric Manke with ESM Engineers. I'll, I can respond quite briefly to the, your transportation question, and then I'll turn it over to Chris as far as your question regarding Pod 3. Roberta's right. I mean, the timing of this is, is actually pretty fortunate, not only because of the improvements that will be occurring at the intersection of Route 59 and West Bartlett Road, which will make a tremendous difference and impact on, on any of the queuing that's, that's occurring right now at that intersection. I mean, as Roberta said, you know, there's not only dual lefts going eastbound or going northbound from, from eastbound West Bartlett Road, but every, every leg of that intersection will have a dual left, as well as through lanes, as well as right turn. So that'll make a huge improvement to that intersection, which should help out other areas. We also, you know, the corridor transportation study that you're doing right now is, the timing is actually very good as well. We were able to provide them with the information that you're seeing before you said they can incorporate that into their study. We are also, we've engaged our own transportation engineer who has already reached out to Fish Transportation and who has worked with Fish in, in previous years, you know, to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as traffic projections and making sure that the reports are synchronized. He's also already has reached out to IDOT to discuss our, you know, turn lanes coming off of West Bartlett Road, even though it's not IDOT's jurisdiction. Certainly, Cook County will defer to them as far as their thoughts on the curb cuts, and we've gotten some feedback from them already. As far as the full access, they think that's, that could work, but, you know, obviously, into the commercial, that is. But, but obviously, we all need to wait for the traffic study that both we're doing and that the village has engaged already. So we anticipate the, the traffic counts have already been completed. The traffic, our traffic study will take probably another month before it's finalized, but once we get that information, we can better answer any transportation questions. So with that, I'll turn over to Chris Nats. He can discuss your second question regarding Pod 3.
Yes, hi, this is Chris Nats with Crown Community Development. I just want to say we're grateful for the opportunity to present to the board for your consideration. I believe you asked, you know, if we had a specific builder in mind that's considering the Pod 3, and yes, it's, Pulte Homes is, is expressing interest in being a part of the community.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any other comments on the concept plan for developer?
I'd like to ask one more question about the commercial area. Do you have any idea of what you, who may be interested in that commercial area?
We have had some inquiries, but nothing specific thus far that I, that I'm in a position to share with you. We have, we have nothing of, you know, nothing succinct.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question regarding Pod 4 on the townhomes.
Sure.
How many homes, how many units are you anticipating in each building?
Those are, in general, I believe they're all four to, four-unit buildings. There may be a couple, five or six unit buildings. So four to six unit buildings.
I have a quick question. I know it's very conceptual at this point, but I see a multi-use path. Would there be some kind of path connecting to get over like 59? So like if people did want to walk to the downtown area?
I can answer that. Route 59, it's, it's, it's difficult, right? I mean, especially with the widening of this intersection. To be quite honest, I'm, I'm a biker, you know, I'm on the trail system in King County all the time, but it would be difficult to cross that many lanes with pedestrian and bikes. That being said, that is something certainly we're going to review with our traffic study to, you know, see if that's an option. It'd be our desire as well. It's just, you know, the bigger, the wider the intersection, the more, more concerned with safety, you know, we get, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a, there's an overpass. If you go down 59 south of, south of Army Trail that I think would be ideal to put somewhere along there where people could actually walk along a bike path and get downtown.
Oh, it's a charge. Overpass are, issues with overpass, you know, there are chances to begin with, but also they, they require.
Can you pause a second? Somebody has their. Okay, go ahead.
So we've dealt with this in our Thornwood project in South Elgin, where we had a, we had a, ultimately, King County was able to put a.
Overpass, I've seen it, yes.
And it's nicely done, but you'll also notice that it takes up a lot of land. You got to switch back there. The, it actually worked out better there because of the topography. This topography makes it worse. But probably the biggest, and I'll be, I'm going to be candid, we, we fought against that, that bike, that pedestrian crossing initially for one reason. It blocks the commercial, right? And users do not like their signs to be, to be blocked, blocked, and especially their storefronts to be blocked. So that would be a concern that we would have here, and I'm assuming the village would share that concern.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, overall, what a great concept. I mean, you've hit it on the head here of having ranch homes in here. You would, you won't even need a sales guy. No offense to your sales guy. You won't, you won't need a sales guy to sell ranch homes anywhere in the, in the suburban area, I don't think. But that's, this is a great concept. I love the concept. I think it's ideal to have, you know, active adult duplexes with no maintenance and active adult single families where people want to do their own maintenance. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think we had a lot of heavy lifting to do as far as the transportation concepts and getting traffic to flow, but I think it's a fantastic idea. And thank you for us, for considering Bartlett for such a great, great plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, you know, thank you for considering us. And, you know, as you know, you know, we've been property owners in the village for quite some time now, and we're all in, we've shared, I don't know how many more standards than we're ready, but we finally got a plan that'll work well. We appreciate your consideration.
Who did we lose?
Well, are there any other comments from the, the board? I definitely like the, the idea of the mixed-use path, and the more that we can interconnect.
I would just like to, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. I can hear you now.
Um, the only thing I'd like to add is with all the construction that will probably be starting in 2022 with West Bartlett and 59, if the village could work with IDOT on an overpass for a, a bridge for the walkers to get across, I think that was a good idea by Trustee Gansey. I think that would help connect both sides of the village here.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah, because I, all of a sudden, there was all this noise, and all of a sudden, everybody was gone. So anyway, okay, so then that takes care of the, the first item on our agenda for building and zoning. Second item is the, the Buc-E's on Route 59 and Sterns Road, which we've had a couple of meetings about already. And so, Ms. Brill, would you like to, to relate to us any recent developments?
Sure. Just as you may know, that it's, they're asking for special use permits for an automobile service station to sell packaged liquor and outdoor sales. They've also asked for variations for their fuel pump canopy and to reduce the interior parkway landscaping. And at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, they reviewed the variation requests and conducted the requisite public hearing at their meeting on November 5th, 2020, and the zoning board recommended approval based upon the findings of fact outlined in the staff report. The Plan Commission then reviewed the petitioner's request for a site plan review and special use permits at their meeting and held the public hearing on November 12th, 2020. The Plan Commission recommended approval, subject to the conditions recommended by the staff, the findings of fact, and the following revised condition, which was the petitioner will work with staff to set restrictions for tanker deliveries in the event the village determines that the timing of fuel deliveries creates circulation problems on the property and/or within the Home Depot subdivision. And with that, I know Mr. McMahon is on the Zoom call tonight. If you have any specific questions, I'm sure he would be able to answer those for you.
Alright, thank you very much. But my first question has to do with a great deal of concerns that I've heard from the community about the Sonic. I think there's a perception that we are, we quote unquote, "we are getting rid of a Sonic and replacing it with a gas station." But it's my understanding, and I want to clarify this right now, it's my understanding that this Sonic site has, has been, we'll say, underperforming and is probably not something that would be viable in the, the medium term anyway. Do we have any information on that?
We do, and Mr. McMahon, I think, can address that.
Okay.
Richard, are you on?
I am. Hal is selling it to us because it is the weak sister in his group of stores that he has throughout the Chicagoland area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, are there any questions from the committee?
I, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I have a question. I read an article that Buc-E's was bought or was merging. Is there any truth to this?
Yes, there is. Casey's, which is the, I think, the fourth-largest convenience store operation in the United States and the fifth-largest pizza purveyor in the United States, is acquiring Buc-E's as a stock purchase at the end of December, this month. Nothing will change on any, will continue to operate on this Buc-E's, except this one. I would imagine that Casey's will come in and, and want to get approval for resigning and probably some interior changes to the kitchen, but the layout will remain the same.
Alright, was staff aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for redeveloping this parcel. I know this store, and it, it, it definitely needs some improvement. So I want to thank you for developing this site.
I would just add that being from Iowa, I would attribute to the very popular pizza coming out of the Casey's store in Iowa. Now, it doesn't compare to, doesn't compare to the pizza that we have in Chicago, but it is good. But yeah, I think it's, it'll be a nice improvement to that, that, that corner. And it's unfortunate that Sonic couldn't make a go of it there, and we are fortunate to have somebody stepping in and reconstructing that corner so quickly. It could be sitting for some time, and I think it's really fortunate that, that we have a viable option to put on that corner, and it looks really nice.
Does anyone else have comments?
On the board?
Okay.
Yeah, let me throw, ask one question. When you're going to start construction, what's the game plan here? What's the timeline?
We would begin construction in April or May.
Okay. And completion, the build-out?
Probably in 90 to 120 days after we begin.
Wow, 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 right. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Alright, so we'll, we'll forward this matter on to the, the village board then.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. President, that's all we have for building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Final item on our committee this evening on our Finance and Golf, Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item. It's a debt refund, refunding bond ordinance. And Todd, if you would run with this, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Danny. Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about two refinancing opportunities that we have. One is to refinance the Page Water Commission loan to lock those rates in at these low rates. The other is to refund the 20, the callable portion of the 2012 general obligation bonds. They're still outstanding for, for savings. This is a parameter-style ordinance. The village has been using this kind of ordinance for the last three bond issues. It offers flexibility and allows the bonds to be issued over the next six months. So depending on the environment, if it doesn't work out right away the first of January, then we can hold on this, this parameters gives us some flexibility in that way. It also sets limits that must be followed when the final bond terms are, are established. And another main thing that it does, it delegates the final approval to the village president or the village administrator, the clerk, the treasurer, or the finance director. So what this ordinance does, it gets, gives approval basically so that these bonds can be sold sometime other than right at a board. uh, right, uh, at a board meeting. Uh, so all of these parameters, uh, they must be set in order for the bonds to be issued. So there's two parts. The, uh, there's two series of bonds, I guess you could call it. One is for the Page Water Commission loan, the other is for the twenty-twelve geo-refunding. Um, and so the parameters, um, I'll just go over the parameters quickly, and, um, this is the main part of the, the ordinance. Uh, the, it sets the max par at eighteen million eight hundred thousand with the final maturity date of twenty thirty-nine. Uh, the maximum annual maturity amount would be one million six hundred thousand dollars, and the max coupon interest rate, six percent. And then the maximum bond tax levy, annual tax levy would be one million seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and the other series, the twenty-twenty-one B, would have a maximum par of eleven million nine hundred and fifty thousand with the final maturity of twenty thirty-one. Uh, both of these maturities are, uh, the same as what their current, uh, debt service is, so we're not extending the, uh, the debt service, um, timeline at all. Um, max maturity amount on the, on the second series would be two million twenty thousand with the max interest rate of five percent and, uh, maximum bond tax levy of two million twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Um, Delana, welcome her. She is our, um, bond advisor with R and W Barrett. She is on the line here tonight. She did look at the current market. Uh, the rates have gone up slightly, uh, with the, um, water, um, loan refinancing. Uh, estimated savings are right around seven percent. They had been just over eight percent at the beginning of October. Savings would still be estimated around one point two-five million as far as the twenty-twelve refunding, uh, estimated savings is around ten percent on a present value basis, or about one point one million over the, uh, life. So the next step, uh, would be to, would be to approve the ordinance. We'd be bringing this at the December fifteenth meeting. Uh, we still have to meet with, uh, our Moody's, the Moody's rating, rating agency. They would put the, uh, a rating on these bonds. We're currently at, uh, double A-one, which is the second highest level that Moody's, uh, gives municipalities. And, uh, then, then we're expecting a bond sale towards the beginning of January. Um, so that's the, that's the quick nutshell of what the parameters bond ordinance is meant to do and how it will work and the flexibility that it could give us. So, uh, if there are any questions, uh, we'd be happy to work on those.
Um, real quick question. When will these, uh, bonds be eligible to be, um, refunded again or refinanced again?
Okay, yeah, the, um, normally on the twenty-year, uh, loan refinancing, we'd be looking at about ten years for a call date. So they could be refunded after ten years. On the, um, twenty-twelve refunding, uh, they've only got about ten, eleven years, so about eight years after, we could, we would have a chance for the last few years of, uh, debt service payments.
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, is there any way to, I know that with the rates moving up in the bond market slowly, up and down a little bit, but mostly probably, they don't have anywhere to go down really. Is there any way to accelerate what we're doing here so we, we reduce our risk of losing another percent in savings?
Todd?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Delana take that one.
Sure, sure. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Great, good evening. Um, so, right now, we're, we're in a position to submit documents to Moody's next week. And so really, the driving force behind our timeline going forward is how quickly Moody's can turn, can, can schedule a conference call uh, with us and turn a rating. Um, our hope is to have a rating before or just after Christmas. I know we got the Christmas holiday to deal with and, and some folks being on vacation, so the turnaround time could, could delay us some. But our hope is to, to get that rating, again, either before Christmas or just after, post the preliminary official statement, which is your offering document, and, which would then allow us to, uh, hold a competitive sale as early as the first week in January.
Good.
We're still able to track that timeline, and I agree with you. If we can enter the market any sooner, you know, I, I, I think we'll, we'll, we'll move as quickly as we can. Unfortunately, um, one big piece of the puzzle is, is a little bit out of our control, and that's the, the Moody's rating.
Well, 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 I'm sure that Todd can get on the phone with them and say, hey, we need this by next week, and you'll get it done, right, Todd?
I wish I had that much pull.
Yeah, Moody's is rerating so many bonds right now, they don't even know where they're coming from. Their head is spinning, so. Um, yeah, as quickly as we can push it. I mean, it would be fantastic if we could get this thing finished up before, um, these, the rates keep ticking, uh, up a little bit at a time.
Anybody else have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I think when Todd gave, um, the, the synopsis of this, that, um, um, when we go to sell these bonds, are, are, are we cutting out the board's approval that it's only for the designated officers?
Yeah.
Correct. The, the parameters ordinance establishes certain criteria that has to be met in order for one of the designated officers to authorize the sale of the bonds. So for example, the refunding of the series twenty-twelve bonds, there has to be a minimum present value savings of three percent in addition to all the other parameters being met in order for one of those designated offer, officers, um, to, to lock in a sale. And this can happen anytime between the adoption of the ordinance on December fifteenth, um, and it would expire, I believe, April sixth.
And that's because?
So if the market moves away from us, we can, we can delay and be ready to enter the market as soon as, uh, conditions warrant.
Okay, so the purpose is to expedite?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? If not, then, uh, I want to thank you, Todd, and I, I want to thank everyone for their efforts in doing this. This is incredible, you know. I'm privileged to be party to this. If we have, uh, nothing else, and I, I'd like to see this on the Jennifer vote at the next village board meeting. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Alright, Mr. President, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins? Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Yes.
Swansky? Swansky?
Yes.
Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great week, having a good couple of weeks. Happy Christmas shopping, and we will see you in a few weeks.
Stay safe and healthy, everyone. Thank you.